The things I think I mentioned a while back was we had 51 openings at one point. And that's where we started talking about the hiring bonuses. I'm gonna add more time. That was a good voice, though. And so. I'll start your three minutes over sheriff. Yes, Tess. I think you have it. No, still echo? Echo, echo? No, I hear it. Alright, so I'm back and thank you. You're gonna start my three minutes again? Oh man, thank you. So when I was talking several months ago about the conditions we had referenced positions not being filled, it was 51 openings of 230 positions. And at that time, that was roughly just over a 22% gap in our staffing to our openings. Through all these different programs, what we've mentioned, the hiring bonuses, a change in the contract. Thank you again for helping negotiate a fair contract that has upped the wages in every aspect of the work. There's one area that I will mention that still needs to come up, and that is in our booking clerk and control operator. We are working to combine those two positions because we are finding that it's under $15 an hour and nobody is coming for that position. So we're looking to, we have in fact eight openings there out of the 10 positions. So we are looking to increase that pay, but at the same time, we'll likely do that through a combination of that job and another job and eliminating one of those two positions. Anyways, because of all the hard work you guys have put forth to this program and everyone at the sheriff's office, we've done more interviews, we've done interviews differently, we've done more recruiting. In fact, you all have a recruiting card that please feel free to share with anybody. We have been able to increase our work population. Today, we are roughly a, just about a 10% opening of positions. And one of the things that we want everybody to know, especially this board, is that while we've been able to go out and fill several cadet positions, we have people at the academy today. We hired a group out of the academy. We had sent six. Five were successful and they are on the road training right now. So we want you to know that it's a 16-week process at the academy, another 16 weeks at the minimum at the sheriff's office. And that whole time, you have to fill those positions with overtime. So the overtime will continue there. It'll continue in the jail. The jail, we have actually boosted those numbers so significantly that we have 21 people going to the Michigan Sheriff's Corrections Training Council training in the next year. And that is a five-week training on top of the five weeks they receive inside the sheriff's office. Again, more overtime because those positions are filled with these people that can't actively do these jobs until their training without supervision. And so we have a lot of overtime coming. I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. But we're very fortunate. Used to be we would hire M. Cole certified police officers and they would work in the jail. Well, no longer does any M. Cole certified correction or police officer come to work in a jail. And so that's why we've had to adjust how we operate, who we hire, and what we actually seek for people. I've passed out the recruiting cards and I want to make sure that if you guys ever have any questions, you contact us. But again, a big thank you to all of you for your support. It continues and you'll get other updates as we go forward to make sure you are aware of how much overtime we're spending on this program. Thank you very much. Oh, any questions?
Traditionally, we don't do the back and forth, but I do. Commissioners do have questions, please sit down with the sheriff. There's a lot of good things happening there and moving in the right direction, right?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members wishing to address the board? Kevin, do we have anybody online?
We have no recorded calls this evening. Dina, may you advise on any hands that are raised on Zoom, please?
We do not have any hands raised.
Alright, moving on to Brownfields. Yes. Oh, we have a public comment up there. I'm terribly sorry.
Perfect. Can you hear me now? Perfect. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Adrienne Zaya. I'm the Public Policy Coordinator at YWCA Kalamazoo in maternal and child health. Today I'm speaking and you'll also hear from my colleague Daniel behind me. But today I wanted to submit this public comment to ask for your continued partnership in addressing health equity in Kalamazoo County through renewed financial support of YWCA Kalamazoo's reproductive health fund. YWCA Kalamazoo aims to eliminate racism and empower women. While our organization works to advance this mission through racial and gender equity empowerment programs, through life-saving programs for many in our community, a key goal of our association has been to ensure that women, girls, and marginalized communities have access to quality, affordable, comprehensive, and culturally competent reproductive sexual and gender-affirming healthcare. Guided by our mission and informed by experiences of our community, YWCA Kalamazoo launched the first comprehensive reproductive health fund, or RHF, in the United States. RHF supports the financial and transportation needs of medically underserved and gender diverse individuals in Kalamazoo County. Since its inception in 2021, the RHF has funded over 300 services, including but not limited to doula care, gender-affirming care like name changes, emergency contraception and abortion. Those utilizing RHF funds in this last year alone, 50% were people of color. 58% identified as LGBTQIA+, that's a 17% increase from the year prior. 62% had a household income of less than $24,600 and 25% were uninsured. As demonstrated by those served, not only has RHF directly contributed to the residents' ability to access essential healthcare, but highlights the reality that many in Kalamazoo County may still face obstacles to affordable healthcare due to race, income, gender, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, and even disability. Enabling access such to such healthcare is critical, not just to our mission, but contributes to Kalamazoo County's efforts towards equity and the promotion of county residents' health and safety. Removing these economic barriers allows individuals to access the care that they need to live whole, healthy, and authentic lives and expands individuals' economic and educational opportunities, reduces health disparities, protects perinatal and maternal health outcomes, and improves overall community health. Investments from Kalamazoo County and the RHF have and can continue to play a pivotal role in ensuring access to care for those most marginalized and making better healthcare outcomes a reality. Therefore, YWCA Kalamazoo asks the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners for your continued funding support in the amount of $90,000 to the RHF. Thank you very much.
Was your ribbon?
No, it's already on, actually.
Oh, perfect. Oh, I hear it. Greetings, commissioners. Excited to be here. As you heard, my colleague Adrian, my name is Daniel Hamilton. I use C him pronouns. I serve as the Director of Public Policy at YWCA Kalamazoo. And I also want to submit public comment in effort to bring awareness to sitting commissions in the community around the continued effort for the county to prioritize access to comprehensive reproductive healthcare for our most vulnerable residents. In 2021, YWCA Kalamazoo engaged the county to ask for initial funding to support the only comprehensive reproductive health fund, which as you heard, provides funding for abortion care, doula care services, and gender-affirming services. And it's only one of its kind in the country. Since the launch of this amazing community resource, we have been able to do a lot of good and meet a lot of community needs around comprehensive reproductive healthcare. Last year, the reproductive health fund serviced over 230 callers, rendering over 240 total services. With access to abortion being our primary use service along with increased use of gender-affirming care due to the addition of our gender-affirming products. We have been able to successfully reach our targeted demographics. Almost 60% of participants using the fund identifying as LGBTQIA+. And participants of the fund are almost split evenly between individuals who use Medicaid, uninsured, and privately held insurance holders, indicating a widespread of need for these services regarding, regardless of where they land on the insurance spectrum. However, there is more yet to be done. Within the fall, with the fall of Roe and many remaining barriers to reproductive healthcare persisting, including anti-abortion laws soon to follow, states and local municipalities are being forced to step up and safeguard reproductive healthcare within our own communities. Thus, it should come as no surprise that I'm here before you today. The county commission must choose to be a committed supporter and continued supporter of reproductive access and quality affordable, comprehensive reproductive healthcare for our community, especially for our Black and Brown communities, LGBTQIA+ communities, survivors of violence, and people working to make ends meet. Enabling access to reproductive, sexual, and gender-affirming care is critical to Kalamazoo fulfilling its vision of health equity. I ask that you continue funding support of the comprehensive reproductive health fund, removing economic barriers to care and allowing individuals to access the full spectrum of healthcare that they need and desire to live whole, healthy, and authentic lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to Brownfield presentation. Who gets to get to the Brownfield presentation?
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Macy Walters. I'm the Brownfield Redevelopment Administrator for the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to present to you today. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I believe I have about a five-minute time period, but I'm excited to let you know a little bit about what I do and what we do. Okay, so as you can see on the TV here, I'm gonna go ahead and go through my presentation. Dina's gonna go ahead and move through the slides for me here. I will briefly touch on what the Brownfield Authority is for the county, some benefits of redevelopment, funding, how we are involved in our community, and some frequently asked questions that we may have. So about the KCBRA, that's the acronym we use for the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. You probably see KCBRA everywhere. My three minutes are up. So in any case, the Brownfield Authority was established in 2002 per Public Act 381. This board is composed of nine board of directors, all appointed by this commission here. We have a series of different types of professionals on the board. Each one of them have a nice niche background and help aid in the decision-making process on the KCBRA. This board also serves as the Economic Development Corporation Board as well. So that is just a good bit of information for you to have. So I will just get into what are brownfields. There are about 1,200 brownfields in the county, or at least known brownfields in the county. You probably drive down the road and see some without realizing it, or maybe while you do realize it. But brownfields can be a property that is blighted, a historic resource, something that's deemed functionally obsolete from its original purpose, something that could be perceived to have contamination. It might not actually be contaminated, but it maybe was, so we need to look into that. And anything that's actually deemed a facility that is in fact contaminated, those are what brownfields are. Some benefits of Brownfield redevelopment that I would like to touch on today is just the fact that these are great projects to have in the county because it helps redevelop already sites that typically already have infrastructure and are already in our communities, but are typically serving no beneficial purpose to the community. So when a site is redeveloped, we're able to increase investment in these properties, put more jobs back into our community, add some more dollars to the tax base, as well as reduce sprawl and be able to take care of some of these historic resources that we have within our communities. Thank you, Dina. Funding for the Brownfield projects in general. One thing I'd like to point out is Public Act 381 is really just a good resource for the entire state of Michigan. And so Act 381 allows for these Brownfield redevelopment projects to take place. And there's a number of different types of funding options that can happen during these projects. Typically, these are tax increment financing projects where if you look at the graphic up here on the board, if you see the blue area at the bottom of the graph, that is the base value of a property before it's redeveloped. Once a Brownfield plan happens and the property is redeveloped, our authority is able to capture taxes collected on that increment, so that red area on the graph there. So the rest of the community is still receiving tax payments for the original base value, but that property value increase temporarily, the Brownfield Authority captures a little bit of taxes on to help reimburse developers for some of these eligible activities per state statute. And once the Brownfield plan is complete, then that increment of tax capture goes back into the tax roll and is able to be invested back in the community. So that's just a really nice way to help finance these projects. Brownfield plans are exactly what we do with that. You go and you make a plan. There is a TIF estimate table of about what each year of capture is going to be. And typical plans can be anywhere from 25 to 30 years, just depending on the length of the plan. Those are always detailed in the Brownfield plan, so you can always refer to those estimated tax captures for each year. And each millage is detailed, so it's very nice. Another funding option is actually our local Brownfield revolving fund. That is a fund that the Brownfield Authority is allowed to capture five years from each Brownfield plan. And that fund is a great pool of money to be able to reinvest back in the community. Typically, it is treated as if it's a loan, if somebody were to borrow from that fund. But every redevelopment project is a case-by-case basis that the board does take a look at and consider. The MEDC is a great resource for people as well. That's where the Act 381 work plans would go into place to allow for some more funding. Eagle grants, as well as EPA assessment grants, are also ways to help fund these redevelopment projects. Thank you, Dina. So some important things to take away from Brownfield plans in general. These include county, state, and local units of government and library taxes. However, Brownfield plans do not influence per pupil funding when it comes to schools. That's just a big thing to point out, as well as capturing debt millages. The Brownfield Authority does not capture debt millages from schools or for other places. These Brownfield plans are great because they help reimburse the Brownfield Authority and other BRAs and developers who are involved with these projects. All of these eligible activities are eligible through state statute. So you're able to go in and pay everybody for some of their exact costs, which helps facilitate the redevelopment of these otherwise unmarketable sites. It just helps people want to invest in these polluted areas or perceived to be polluted. And the Brownfield plans again help fund that local Brownfield revolving fund that just helps us invest more in the community. Now, the Brownfield Authority has actually had quite a few different grants come through in the past. And so the three grants that I would really like to touch on today would be our EPA assessment grants that the Brownfield Authority has been awarded over the years. So beginning in 2007, they had a $400,000 community-wide assessment grant where they were able to do all sorts of different small projects and be able to leverage federal dollars and roll that back into the tax base here. And then because of this work, they were allowed to be awarded another grant for another $400,000 that spanned from 2016 to 2020. Again, leveraging federal funds and allowing these investments to go back in the community, which leads us to our most recent grant that I would like you all to know about now. We still have about a year and a half left in this and around $100,000, give or take a little bit more than that, that we still have to invest in our community. That was a $300,000 community-wide Brownfield Assessment Grant that focuses on the north side. That's where we would like to have most of our projects developed at, but it is countywide. So we encourage developers and interested parties to contact the Brownfield Authority to see if their project would be appropriate for some funding. We still have about a year and a half left in that grant, so we would like to be able to see some of those dollars go into the community. Next slide, please, Dina. Thank you. So the Brownfield Authority in our community, I really want to stress on the fact that collaborating with local nonprofits, the Land Bank Authority, other Brownfield redevelopment authorities, and just basic municipal partnerships are a huge factor in BRAs around the state. You know, we range from multimillion-dollar projects down to small-scale projects where somebody's borrowing less than $20,000. You know, we, we don't discriminate. We want to encourage as much redevelopment as we can. And so our board really does consider everybody on a case-by-case basis. So if anybody is interested, we encourage that they apply and we can help them through the process or help redirect them to another resource. If we're not able to help them, we can help connect them with somebody else who may be able to do so. One of our most recent partnerships that we've enjoyed was with the Land Bank Authority. We helped create a Brownfield plan last summer that was incentivized with the Land Bank Authority's help. And so just continuing to network with the BRAs for the city of Kalamazoo, as well as the city of Portage and the Land Bank and any of the other local BRAs, we, we really enjoy doing so. It's just a good working relationship to have. Next slide, please, Dina. So how to apply to the Brownfield Authority? Go on our website and there is a two-part application on there. You would go ahead and fill out the application and my contact information is on there. I help usher people through that process, give them suggestions, and just make sure that they're being able to ask for everything that they may need so that our authority can help support their project the best that we can. Again, these are just other ways to benefit the community. We want to treat everybody on a case-by-case basis. And so we love seeing small and big projects come before us. Dina, go ahead. Thank you. So some of our frequently asked questions, some, some that I answer all the time, is just the typical length of a Brownfield plan. They are limited to the amount of eligible activities that are there for reimbursement. So the plan ends once the developer or the authorities are reimbursed and then a five-year of capture into our LBRF happens. And so that, you know, that timeframe, typically we give people 20, 25 years of reimbursement and then that additional five is in for that 30 years. These plans can end early if the estimates for how much we receive in TIF, if their property value goes up way more than what we estimated, then these plans can end early. It is all just on what's eligible to be reimbursed. And then as far as, you know, what is the local Brownfield revolving fund? I touched on this briefly. I would encourage you to ask me more about that. If you'd really like to know about, you know, past projects that we've had or future projects that you believe may be a good thing to use. The Brownfield revolving fund is just a really nice resource for our community. All of our projects that have a Brownfield plan help give funding in for that. And so the biggest idea is just to continue to revolve those dollars into the community. That's what we use the LBRF for. The timeline of the application process, depending on what your ask is, could range typically from 30 to 60 days just to get an application approved and through the, through my board. But 60 to 90 days for Brownfield plans. As you will see later today, I will be presenting a Brownfield plan to you. And so your timeline is in consideration for that process as well. As well as, of course, townships and other municipalities who may be involved. And so what happens if a project does not reach completion? This is a common question. Somebody will borrow money. What if they don't, you know, follow through with their project? Typically, there is a reimbursement agreement that we do ask developers sign ahead of receiving funding. Again, it's that case-by-cases issue here. If somebody does borrow money and they don't follow through with their project, we just encourage them to approach the board, stay as transparent as possible, and we can help work through the process of figuring out what the needs of that redevelopment project may be to ensure its success. Last slide, please, Dina. Okay, thank you. I know I threw a lot of information at you here. I would be happy to provide more at another time. My contact information is listed here, as well as Rachel Grover, the Director of the Planning Department. At this time, does anybody have any specific questions they would like me or Rachel to answer?
Questions from commissioners?
I have one quick one. How many of the projects that you currently have are, have recouped all the costs from developers, recouped all the loans and are now contributing to the LBRF?
Oh, so the current amount that's contributing into the LBRF. So not every project actually has to completely finish reimbursing the developer before it goes into the LBRF. So depending on if they're taking state or local taxes, there are some types of plans where developers are only allowed to be reimbursed through state taxes for certain things through that state statute, or they're only reimbursed through local-only TIF. So then we're allowed to capture into the state pool of funds into our LBRF. So it can feel a little bit gray in that aspect. You know, I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head for how many are contributing into the LBRF right now. But I would say there's probably, you know, out of about 15 to 16 active plans that we have right now, I would say we have anywhere between at least five that are actively putting a little bit of money into the LBRF. But again, like I said, it's all case-by-case. So if you have any specific questions about any actual plan, I would love to go through them with you and answer those questions.
And I can just mention one thing on that. The Corner at Drake Project and Brown Family Holdings, which is in Kalamazoo Township, both ended and those have completely reimbursed developer, authority, and the LBRF. So those are done. Those plans are, have completed their capture. So those are two that finished.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so two so far.
So not all the plans will go the 25 years or 20 years, then?
Yeah, so technically they may not. That is the maximum time allowable per state statute is 25 years of reimbursements to developer and then the five additional to the LBRF. And it is all based on what they're able to be reimbursed for in the first place. And if the tax estimates, you know, if the property value is higher than we estimated, we'll get paid back faster. If it's lower than estimated, then you don't get reimbursed as fast. Which is why usually when these Brownfield plans are made, the consultant company who, who makes them works with the local assessors to be able to get the most accurate depiction of these estimates. Although typically they do try to be a little bit conservative when making these plans so that there's, you know, a little bit more of a realistic reach with that.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Commissioner, yes, sir?
Thank you, Chair. As most of you know, I have a, a, a meeting that I host on the second Mondays of months of every month. And Rachel and Macy presented in January, good information, very much like this. And it was one of the biggest crowds we've had at that Monday morning meeting. I wasn't sure if people really knew or cared or whatever. The turnout was big. I think you might have been there, John.
Words getting out.
Yeah, great. You know, we may have to get a bigger room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say the Brownfield, what you guys have been able to do over the last 15 years has really been a jewel to this county. So thank you for all your work over just, not just the last year, but the decade, so.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Alright, next we have a presentation from the Brownfield, the 5242 Gold Road, Kelsey Credit Union.
Okay. Thank you so much. Looks like Dina has the Brownfield plan pulled up here. I'm not going to go through the entire plan for you, but Dina, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to where you can see a site map of where the property is located on Gold Road. And I will just go ahead and begin here. Okay, so before I get too far into this, I wanted to go ahead and just introduce the President and CEO of Kelsey Credit Union, Mr. Matt Lehman, he's right here. And then we also have Teresa Searls from Fishbeck. She's the consultant on this project who helped create this Brownfield plan. They're available for after this presentation if you have any specific questions that I'm not able to address. Okay, alright. Thank you. It looks like Dina has the parcel pulled up here. So for those of you who are not familiar with this area of Gold Road, this is right over here by Menards, over by the 1010 Restaurant. It is located at 5242 Gold Road in Comstock Charter Township. So this site included the redevelopment of a point, .89 acre site. This was a former gas station. The redevelopment of this site included the removal of underground storage tanks, demolition of the existing structure, and construction of a new 2,800 square foot Kelsey Credit Union branch building. This project specifically helped expand the tax base as well as include two new full-time jobs into our area, as well as a $3 million private investment that was able to go into this site. So the Kelsey Credit Union is seeking help through the Brownfield Authority for... So the Kelsey Credit Union is seeking help through the brownfield authority for activities related to the state statute that they would be eligible in a brownfield plan for. They did receive a grant from Eagle for about $360,000 and that helped with cleanup activities on the site. Due to the unforeseen costs of construction and pandemic-related activities, some of the costs came in a little bit higher than anticipated. So now that they are aware that they are, that they may be eligible for activities for reimbursement, they would like to approach this board as well as the KC BRA for consideration of adopting a brownfield plan to allow them to be reimbursed for some of these eligible activities. And so the reimbursement of these activities would expect, be expected to be about a 25 to 30-year plan. The developers reimbursement would only be about a third of the actual costs that they had. Those, those figures are detailed in the memo that I have provided to the board. And so it is expected that the brownfield authority will actually be able to capture the maximum amount of state taxes into our LBRF. So this would be a great project for our brownfield authority to support as well. It is just a good example of getting some more of those local dollars into our LBRF. And so the last thing that I would like to go ahead and talk to about this is just about how this is just a good example of a piece of property that had there not been some strategy and networking with local municipalities, this project would have been hard to develop. So this former gas station ends up having a little bit more costs associated with it. Once you have to take out a tank or once there's actual pollution on a site. And so without the help of the brownfield authority, without the help of the state of Michigan through the Eagle Grant, without the help of Comstock Charter Township, you know, passing the resolution as well, this site would have otherwise possibly got, be, be unmarketable for anybody and had been for a while. So it is just really nice to be able to see somebody come in there and clean up that area and be able to invest some of their own private dollars into our community. So before I end here, I would just like to open up the floor to the board if there are any questions. I do have the tax table here. If you have any questions about millage rates, as well as the memo on hand, if you saw anything that you would like to ask us about.
Your questions? I see none. That's always good news.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have review of accounts payable and payroll disbursements. Kevin?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chairs, Commissioners, audience. Tonight in the accounts payable claims list totaling $7,172,394.48 is presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners is asked to approve a claims list totaling $6,250,111.33. Payroll disbursements of $2,373,356.35 are presented for the February 28th and March 3rd payrolls. And I'm happy to take any questions that are any this evening.
Questions from commissioners? I see none. Always a good sign again. All right. Next, we have business priorities, budget. Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Ray. Kevin, I'll jump in on this one if that's appropriate. We talked at our retreat about, you know, our different priorities and what I envision how we handle this is we go through, hold on here, we go through our budget policies. We've got about roughly about 70 or 60 or so budget policies that cover everything from fund balance to how we handle compensation at the end of the year. So I, you know, one of the ones that I think that we can, you know, look at is fund balance. But what I envision doing is every committee of the whole having maybe two or three budget policies that we can go over in depth and look at it and then look at how that impacts our overall budget. And we can see whether that's a, something that strategically that, that falls into something that this board agrees with. You know, I think looking at those policies is right online with what we as a board are supposed to be doing. I mean, that's the vision aspect. And I think that's a good place to start and we can, the next committee, the whole meeting, if that's all right with you, that's how I plan to do the, the budget priorities thing. Every, every committee, the whole will do two or three budget priorities and our budget policies and we'll just go through them. And then when we get to our budget cycle at the end of this year, we, we as commission will be much more prepared to ask the tough questions of our finance and everyone else. But does that sound appropriate to everybody else? All right. Kevin, did you have anything to add to that at all or?
Yes. So we can come prepared next meeting with a policy overview of the fund balance policy. But it'd be, we'd be more prepared if we know what policies to bring forward so that our staff can come prepared to discuss those. So we can definitely have fund balance prepared and then I guess we can meet with board leadership and determine which other ones to gather for the 21st.
Yeah, I was envisioning at the board leadership meeting with Tammy and Jeff, we could sit down and maybe we do it in alphabetical order or maybe we do it in order of importance that board leadership sees fit. But it would, I think by about July or so, we should be able to finish or maybe August, we should be able to finish most of these budget policies. Commissioner, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a great idea and I would like to have the rest of the board be aware of what the two or three that are going to be discussed at the upcoming meeting are, that's in the past, it's just there. And you know, here's the budget policies and you don't really give it the attention that some of them require. So if you could let us know, I for one anyway, would try to bone up a little bit.
I, I, yeah, I agree. I'll try to maybe send an email to the Board of Commissioners once we approve it. So we don't have to wait until that Thursday to a Friday until the civet clerk packets come out. But maybe we can get an email so that everybody can look into their budget book and, and, and judge those, those policies. But I mean, I used to drive Bill Dundon crazy when I was asking during budget time. I would make three-day budget processes turn into like six or seven because I had a question on everything. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner, yes, sir.
Yeah. What, what you were doing driving Dundon crazy was also why you're so darn smart about financial things and the budget now. So he paid your price for you.
I, I appreciate that, but I'll attribute that to all my good clean living. So. But are there any other commissioner comments on the budget process? All right. Seeing none, we're moving right along. Business priority, housing. Mary.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Vice Chairs, Board of Commissioners. My name is Mary Balcomah and I'm here to give you an update on the housing applications. We have received the following, three applications on multifamily, five applications on single family and seven applications on rehab. We evaluate and score our applications through a system called the Amplifund. So every one of you will have an email to the Amplifund and I will put them all into scoring. And we have questions that we have asked and you score them based upon the answers. So we did it last year, but I don't pretend that after going through something once that you're going to be proficient. So what I'm suggesting is that I offer some training sessions and I'll send out a doodle poll and a train and go through all of the applications. And then you can have time to ask questions. If I don't, if I don't know the answer, I will send an email back to the, the applicatee. So I think that's probably the best way to go over it and have it to be the best use of time. Cal Recovery 1 and 2, that is the multi-unit that's going to kind of be behind our HCS building, behind it and then over the river a little bit. They're going into MISTHA and their April funding round. They might last fall and was kicked out due to some environmental concerns. But they're going back in April and they really think that they're going to make it to the finish line. So if that happens, that will be really, really good. And we gave them an advanced funding award for, for about 1.4 million. So we really, really hope that that one is successful. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray and then Commissioner, yes, sir.
Thank you, Director Balcomah. I just have a couple of questions. Can you remind us of the amounts for each category?
Sorry, in the amount of each category, did you say?
Yeah.
Um, certainly. So on multifamily, there was 3 million. On single family, a million and on rehab, a million.
And then, um, did we receive all of these applications before the application deadline of February 17th? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. And then I have one other question. One day we were all being dragged on Facebook saying that we didn't support housing in the city of Kalamazoo. And I of course read all the comments and follow all the links. And then I came to the Amplifund application. And on there, there was additional eligibility information that stated, if your project is located in the city of Kalamazoo, a committee will meet and determine the best source of funding for your project. So I don't recall us having a discussion about that. So how was that decision made and like, where did it come from? I know last year we had some applicants who received funding from both the city and the county, and I don't really see an issue with that. So just wondering, and who is the committee?
So thank you, Vice Chair Ray for that question. So some of the ones in the city of Kalamazoo are the multifamily called River Caddis, which is kind of on river's edge. And also the Hawthorne Project. So the River Caddis, they're working on their financing with MEDC and with MISTHA. And so some of these have been in the works for five years. So we met with MISTHA, with the MEDC, with the city of Kalamazoo, with the brownfield, with me, with Lisk. Because obviously there's a gap in funding and as the interest rate increased and they haven't gotten to the finish line, what really is the true gap and what really can they bring as a successful project? So that was the committee that went and it's really evaluating, not the project per se, but the financing, since these have been in the works for multiple years.
So this didn't apply to any other applicant outside of those two?
That is correct.
Okay. I've just seen in general, it was just on the application.
Yeah, because these are a little bit trickier, right? And the Hawthorne Project is on Stockbridge and there's water issues that are being addressed, brownfield, the location. And so there's a lot of issues on these multifamily layered financing deals to get to the finish line. And they haven't gotten to the finish line for a reason, right? And so if they come to the county, A, we want to make sure that they're successful. B, that they do have other sources of philanthropy in there or grant funding besides the county. And you know, the city has several sources as well, FFE, they have ERPA, they have Home, ARP, they have CDBG. So really do evaluate where is the best spot for some of the funding.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm just in the future, if we could have that discussion prior to just making a general statement like that. So we're not looking like we're taking a county, county funds and we're only supporting programs or projects outside of the city of Kalamazoo. I don't ever want to feel like I felt reading those comments, we were being called everything in the book. And it wasn't a true statement. We funded many, many projects in the city of Kalamazoo. So.
Right. And these two very projects are obviously, all the multifamily are in the city of Kalamazoo. And you know, with a MISTHA scoring criteria, most of them are going to be in the city of Kalamazoo because they'll have the walkability score of which that would never, ever happen in Oshmo or Texas Township, for instance. So, you know, I was given that person who put that out there and it was just incorrect information. And then it kind of gets wildfire and it grows legs. But I, I appreciate your comment and we'll try to do better in the future in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. Mary, you mentioned that the project going in sort of behind the HCS building has been, am I correct? It's been advanced 1.4 million and it's already had trouble getting started. What happens if it has trouble getting started again? Do we just kiss the 1.4 goodbye?
No, we absolutely do not do that. That is not a thing in the housing department, nor with our administration. So we have our money sunset at the end of 2024. They also have ERPA money that if you haven't obligated, we will reobligate. So if you honestly can't get your project to the finish line for whatever reason, there is a point in time and we put that right in our grant letter that we will reobligate the money. And so it needs to be reasonable in this environment with higher interest costs and labor and all the things that are happening right now. But they do sunset. That's a good question. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Well, thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Next up, we have a treasurer's report, although I do not have an oath. Angelina, do we have an oath? I'm going to wing this. I've seen a lot of episodes of Night Court. What's up? Let me check. It might be under this. Chair, I sent a new copy to your email as well. So it should be on the first page. Okay. Would be on the first page. I don't see it. You, I would very gladly appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right. Sorry about that. Treasurer? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the written report you submitted pursuant to MCL 46 dot 111K and the oral report and testimony you are about to give before this County Board of Commissioners will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Uh, I do.
Thank you. All right. Now, um, report, January report from the treasurer.
Okay. Commissioners, my name is Thomas Whitner, Kalamazoo County Treasurer. Thank you for this opportunity. Our January investment report is complete, has been submitted to you with the exception of accrued interest, which is just one little piece of that report. And we are finishing up getting our Simpro software system to line up with the way a couple of entries were put in. We have to take them out and re-enter them in order for the, the new updated system to agree with itself. So that will be done shortly, working on that tomorrow and I'll have it submitted to you as soon as it's complete. As of 01/31/23, our investments totaled a par value of $219,453,573.61. Over the course of January, we had a effective rate of return of 3.32%. I expect this rate will increase for the February report and then for the March report, fingers crossed, as we reallocate these, as some investments mature and are reinvested into higher interest rate securities. And as we reallocate our investments per the report I gave last time before you to prioritize yield while trading off a little bit of that liquidity. As Chair Taylor had expressed his desire to see these funds recognize some of the yield that we have in the increasing rate environment that we find ourselves in. Let's see, during February, as I said, we were going to be at my February report. Treasurer's office began to implement a significant upgrade to our investment software, Simpro, that is still ongoing. It is taking time, but it should allow us to recognize significant time and effort savings in the future, allowing those reports to be more rapidly completed and submitted. Looking forward to that. It'll take a lot of stress off of me and off of my staff, which is great. And allow you all to have greater transparency more rapidly into the, the situation our investments find themselves in. We are also going to be shifting the responsibilities for our investment reports. My chief deputy treasurer has decided to leave county employed to focus on her own personal physical, emotional and spiritual health as she moves forward with a new stage of her life. And, uh, we wish her all the best. Oh. Uh, this is, oh, that's a, that's okay. Uh, this is, uh, parting ways amicably. Um, we wish her all the best. I will desperately miss her. She's been my chief deputy since my first week in office. And, uh, I, I, I like having her around, but this is the best decision for her and I encourage her to, uh, pursue her best life. So. Um, I will be hiring a new chief deputy, obviously. Um, I'm looking for someone who has significant, uh, financial expertise, preferably someone who has a CPA. Uh, but at this point, I would ask this board, uh, for the opportunity to reclassify the chief deputy position with that expertise in mind. Um, it's something that the Treasurer's Office needs. Uh, it, having a CPA in that position would put us ahead of where we are now in terms of our ability to, uh, complete our reports, to ensure the financial accuracy in a very timely manner and to have the expertise needed to supplement my real estate expertise and really, uh, get our, our, our Treasurer's Office firing on all cylinders. But that will require a reclassification of the position and an increase to its pay. Uh, CPA positions typically start, uh, start out higher, uh, than the chief deputy position is currently classified as. Um, so I would ask for this board, um, for your support in that reclassification process so that we can have the resources in the Treasurer's Office that we desperately need. Um, we've been dealing with a flat budget, uh, in the Treasurer's Office for several years now with very minimal increases. And, uh, it's, it's been difficult to, uh, continue to achieve the high levels that are expected by this board, by myself, uh, and by this county, um, with that, uh, deep, not decreased funding, but that, you know, difficult, uh, funding situation. Um, having a chief deputy treasurer with the, the qualifications I'm speaking of, uh, will help us to achieve that level of excellence. So that is something that I'm asking for today. Um, and, uh, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Streb.
I didn't even have my hand up yet, but you could see I wanted to. Thank you. Um, Treasurer, congratulations on the rate of return in the investment report. That's an improvement. And, uh, where improvement is seen, uh, congratulations are due. So thank you for that. Um, if you could please elaborate again for me on the software issue that you're having in your office, which you articulated at the beginning of your, or a report for me again, I don't, I didn't quite understand. So if you could, uh, again, clarify that for me.
So when the CDs that, uh, I'm speaking of that are causing this issue, the accrued interest issue, were initially entered into the system, um, and these are CDs that are a year plus old. Um, so this was before the county ERP transition. This was way back. Um, they were entered as CDs that accrued their interest, uh, uh, at the end of their term. These CDs, however, the way that they are structured, accrue interest monthly. And that monthly interest is then added to the principal, which allows for the next month's accrued interest to be higher, right? It's a good thing because it allows us to recognize that rate of return on a larger principal balance. Unfortunately, when they were set up initially in the software, they were not set up correctly. Uh, and so the job that we have before us, now that we know that that's the issue that was going on with that accrued interest, and now that the software is capable of this, because of this upgrade that we're, we're following through and started in February, we're going to effectively print out all the information on those CDs, make sure it agrees with what the, the bank has, delete them out of our software system and then reenter them effective the date that they were created with the correct setup so that they have that accrued interest automatically calculated. And all we have to do each month is go in and check and make sure that those numbers match up. They should automatically go through. It'll take us about a half a day to get there. Um, and we're going to go through and that's a half of my day tomorrow. So we'll be doing that then.
So does that mean that the accrued interest reported to us is not quite fully accurate because of the, the software issue?
No, the accrued interest that's been reported so far is accurate. It requires a manual process of going in and recalculating those and then uploading it separately. So that's been the, the, the process. It's a significantly labor intensive process, however. And so we're intending to remove that, add it to the, you know, reclassify those, uh, enter that, uh, information, make sure they're entered correctly, and then that should automatically calculate. The accrued interest up to this point, matching with our bank balances and, uh, to munis and, and to everything else, that's just been a manual process. That's very labor intensive.
Have you consulted with Maynor as to your approach to resolve that issue if they believe it'll be sufficient uh, to create an ongoing process which isn't effective?
We have been, uh, consulting with the Simpro software support, um, uh, as well as, uh, I don't believe we've brought Maynor in. Maynor has been focused on the bank reconciliation, uh, piece that I spoke on last time I gave a report. Um, and so they have not been brought in on that, although they are aware of that issue. And this should solve that, uh, should solve the issue. Yes.
I have a few, I have a few more. Is that okay? Thank you so much. Um, we will be looking at a, a claims report today, um, in which, uh, over $2 million of electronic funds transfers were already issued by your office before approved uh, by this board. Um, can you tell me why that occurred?
Which, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not. I, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm prepared to speak on my investments, not on that today.
So, um, are you aware that you initiated several million dollars of electronic fund transfers before they went through approval at the board process?
I believe the transfers, again, I haven't, uh, stuck this in the front of my mind i- i- in preparation for this. So I apologize. But I believe that the ACHs were approved, but they were not processed because the processing effective date was the date after the, the board meeting. But again, this is, this is coming out of my memory. I've been focused on other things right now.
I'll get, we'll give him the opportunity to question at the end, then we can ask the administrator what we need to. Are there any, uh, other questions from Commissioners? I, I have one comment. Um, that is, you know, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, as Commissioner Streb said, in investments in the first month. That's about 50% of the entire year of 2022 within one month. Um, I, I, I think that this board really needs to look at the, uh, income on the dividend side. And while we're realizing this high rate of return, um, you know, maybe not operational costs, but we, we, we should, we should at least budget appropriately and not have, you know, not just put extra money, more money into carryover next year. So that's just a comment for this board. Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, were all of the books prepared for the auditors so that they could move ahead with doing our audit for this year?
Uh, we are still in process on a couple of those accounts.
So they are not complete at this point in time?
They are not completed at this point in time.
Okay. You're hiring new help though? You indicated the one position, but you had others, I believe, that are vacant or have they been filled now?
No, my office is currently fully staffed.
Fully staffed? You hired some new help then?
Uh, yes.
Have all of those folks been, uh, vetted? I mean, uh, checked, uh, make sure that they don't, haven't, uh, you know, they're, they've been checked for that, uh, they haven't declared bankruptcy or they haven't, uh, you know, been convicted of felons or, you know, something like that? Or do, do you do that process?
The process, uh, does include a background check, yes.
But do they do a credit check on all these people?
I believe so, yes.
Oh.
We do that through, or, uh, HR, um, handles the, the checks.
Corporate counsel? And then.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Chair, I just wanted to, uh, make a note just for the record that, uh, the county cannot, uh, act, um, contrary, or adverse to an individual applicant based on a history of bankruptcy. Um, that would be illegal to do so. So, um, not hiring someone because they've had a bankruptcy is not permitted. So we wouldn't be including that. Uh, we follow standard HR policies.
But if they did, were, uh, committed felon or there was some sort of, like, if they were, um, stealing, embezzling or something, we could do that. Yeah, embezzling. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So that's, I guess that's my question. What is the policy? Because a credit check means that you're not financially handling your business. So if we're hiring people that don't have adequate credit scores, and I don't know what it is for the county. But if, in any most financial institutions, and when you're dealing with money, you have to have some type of a, a credit score. And you do get denied based on bankruptcies, but we don't do it here at the county. So what about their general, what are we looking for when we pull a credit check? And does your department do that? Isn't it based on departments?
Um, corporate counsel.
Um, Chair, in order to, uh, be able to fully describe or explain the human resource policies and practices for background checks, um, we'd probably need to reference those, but I know we do use an outside entity that performs them in accordance with the law. Uh, and there's other provisions and restrictions under the Fair Credit Reporting Act as to how we can use that information, uh, for a job-related purpose. So I don't know particularly off the top of my head in terms of how Kalamazoo County uses it. Um, but we certainly wouldn't be using bankruptcy information.
Is Christine available to elaborate on this?
We can check if she's online. I'm not sure if she's online right now. So, uh, just stand by, please. And I can, but while we're checking, I can fill you in a little bit from my memory back in 2009, 2010. There was a move to take credit checks out, um, of the application process in that it, it was discriminatory towards marginalized communities. Um, so that was a decision we made back in 2009. I'm trying to recall, 2009, 2010. But there was a, there was a big push by the board, um, at that point to, to do that. Um, I think it was, I, I think it was Commissioner Ozier that was pushing that. But that's fifteen, that was a long, yeah, that's my recollection. Minister. Thank you, Chair. We're going to have, uh, Director Cunningham brought over. We're going to bring her over in just a second.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Christine. May you, uh, respond to Commissioner Morales's, uh, question, please?
Yes. So Chair Taylor, um, was exactly right.
Oh, one second, Christine. We have to turn up the volume a little bit, it seems. One moment. Okay, why don't you try now, Christine?
Sure, turn up the volume now.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Great. Um, so yes, uh, there were some changes made, uh, back in the early 2000s related to credit checks. And at that time, the county decided to move to, um, only doing credit checks for those individuals that may be handling money directly. Um, and then some of you who were on the board last year may remember that there was discussion at that time, um, and, and related to conversations about DEI and indicating that credit checks are not useful in evaluating someone's employment status and history. And therefore the board had requested that HR no longer perform credit checks. So that was handled, um, last year in a discussion. There were, uh, several commissioners that, um, voiced their concern about, um, e- exactly what Chair Taylor said, how the banking system can, um, affect marginalized individuals and it's, um, could be potentially seen as an unfair system. Um, and after talking to Labor Council, they didn't really have any objections to no longer doing credit checks. We do perform criminal history checks, absolutely. Um, but the criminal histories are evaluated on a case-by-case basis. We do not have any prescribed. If you have committed this crime, you cannot be employed with the county. So I'll give you an example. If you embezzled money 20 years ago, it, that's not necessarily going to prevent you from getting a job within Kalamazoo County government. Um, all of them, all of the criminal histories are evaluated and discussed with the department head. And then, um, the hiring decision is made from that. We absolutely follow the Fair Credit Reporting Act. So if we receive any information that could potentially have a, um, an effect on their ability to perform the position, or excuse me, get hired for the position, then we provide that individual with an opportunity to respond in writing, explaining it for whether we should do that with the credit checks and we also do it with the criminal background checks. Now, as it relates to elected official, they of course can make their own decisions. If they want to do credit checks, they can do credit checks and we will gladly do them for them. If they want to do criminal history checks and just see the criminal history report themselves, we, we can absolutely do that. The elected officials have a totally separate policies that they handle themselves.
If you got some of that. Montez.
So I guess for me, you know, when we were talking about Director Alvin's position, he wasn't handling money. And, you know, there was something on there that we, we were going to do a credit check and it was like, for what? But when we're talking about the Treasurer's Office and any other, um, entity here that's handling money, I think it's important that if you can't get a CPA, somebody knows how to handle money. Um, and even if a bankruptcy wasn't on there, if we're looking at, you know, the handling of money, whether it be delinquent bills or whatever, like, it's important, especially after what we've been going through for the last year. So, um, we need some qualified folks in here and not our friends. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. So the board, we may want to revisit when people are dealing with 300-plus million dollars if it's a necessity for a credit check to be in place. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? All right. Well, thank you, Treasurer Whitner. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, and it was, uh, Commissioner, former, the late Larry Provanture that pushed for the, uh, elimination of credit checks back in 2009, which brings us into the renaming of the county ID resolution. Commissioner Strebbs, do you have that in front of you to read?
Oh goodness, let me try to get there really quick, Chair. Thank you. As I, uh, oh, you do. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mueller. Thank you. Thank you. So, um, Chair, what is your preference? You want me to discuss it or did you want me to read this?
I think, are we voting on, we're voting on this here, correct, Angelina? Yeah, I, I think if you read it and make it as a motion and then we can entertain discussion after.
Okay, thank you so much. So, um, this is a Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners's resolution, renaming the Kalamazoo County Identification Program as the Larry Provanture Kalamazoo County ID Program. So whereas Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners approved and established the Kalamazoo County Identification Card Program as presented in the Kalamazoo County Identification Task Force Written Report, hereafter the Task Force Report, to be implemented beginning in January of 2018 and to be administered by the Kalamazoo County Clerk's Office by resolution, adopted at a regular session of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on July the 5th, 2017. Whereas the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners approved the establishment of the Kalamazoo County Identification Program Advisory Board and described in the Task Force Report by resolution, adopted at a regular session of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on July 5th of 2017. Whereas we recognize the accomplishments and legacy of Larry Provanture and his deep impact on our community. Whereas Larry graduated from Western Michigan University, holding a master's degree in political science, and he and his wife Ara raised their three children in the city of Portage. Larry worked as a teacher for Portage Public Schools for 31 years and instilled a love and understanding of civic life in his students and connected them to their local government. Whereas Larry served on the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners from 1995 to 2002 and again from 2014 to 2016. Whereas Larry served on numerous Kalamazoo County Boards, including the Mental Health Board, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Homeless Advisory Board, where his vast understanding of the issues impacting Kalamazoo County residents pushed him to find the best solutions. Whereas Larry spearheaded the creation of the Kalamazoo County Identification Card Program and continued to serve the program in an advisory capacity through his last days, out of his concern that thousands of residents in Kalamazoo County suffered from a lack of official government ID needed to conduct daily business. Whereas Larry was profoundly focused on the situations of the poor and oppressed, especially immigrants, and used his persistence and vigorous advocacy to improve the lives of others. And whereas to date, over 5,000 Kalamazoo County residents have benefited from access to a program that provides a county ID due to Larry's vision and hard work. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners hereby renames the Kalamazoo County Identification Card Program as the Larry Provanture Kalamazoo County ID Program. In honor of the late Larry Provanture and expresses our sincere gratitude for his work on behalf of the entire community and especially those who are marginalized. I move this resolution be accepted by the board.
Is there support? There's a motion and support. Clerk, will you play, or let's enter in discussion. Anybody want to discuss this motion? Roll call please.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strabs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. I just credibly miss Larry. He was a, he was a wonderful, wonderful man. He served with me twice, once in 2002 and once in 2014. So he, he was, he was always a, and I remember in 2015, no, every single meeting, he would bring up county ID, every single meeting until we finally, we created a task force to come together. And then the next board put it together, I think. But it was, it was a long time coming. But Larry was by far the biggest driver in that. And when he got on, when he wanted to do something, he did it. He talked to you every single day until you did it. But I think we have a closed session, I believe. One more thing. Oh, proposed amendments to the board bylaws and rules of procedure. Thank you Vice Chair Ray. Who wants to read this one? Commissioner Gissler, you laughed at it? No, I think we can just make a motion to read the top line, correct? Yeah, I think you just have to read the headline portion. Yeah. Corporate counsel?
If I may Chair, typically, and I wanted to just clarify this too, from our bylaws. So generally, even like our last resolution, we would put that before the Committee of the Whole and that's our first reading. And then you move in second to move it to the next regular meeting of the board. That's still the standard process. But you certainly can make motions and approve things here. So the last resolution was fine. For this, I'd recommend that if you would, if the board is okay with it, if I just kind of walk through the, and they're super short, the changes here, and then it move forward for approval, kind of under the standard process unless.
So we'll just do the, just do the, you want to do the highlights with the understanding that this Board of Commissioners, this will be voted on at our next regular scheduled meeting. Okay.
Yes.
I erred. I said it was 15 pages. It looks to me like it's 35.
Yeah.
That would be the full bylaws and rules of procedure. So the amendments that are being proposed are, would affect Section 2.3 Duties of the Chairperson. The only change here is that, given that we've now defined the word bodies in the bylaws and the word bodies covers committees, subcommittees, authority, everything, all of the extra entities are considered bodies. It just substitutes the word committee and subcommittee for bodies and subbodies. Section 2.4 does the same thing, committee and subcommittee replaced with bodies and subbodies. Section 4.4 allows us to change the order of business based on feedback received so that we put proclamations and communications after roll call, to the extent that a vote might be wanted. We're also moving reports and taking out the word committee on our order of business because it's duplicative of the word bodies again. Article 5 Committees has been changed to bodies as well, given that new definition. Section 6.9 Rules of Order, this one's particularly important and arose out of our DEI Committee and it adds language to allow bodies to adopt parliamentary authority other than Roberts rules if approved by the Board of Commissioners. So it just adds the phrase at the end, or as approved by the Board of Commissioners, that way they're not bound to Roberts and they can consider other options. And then six, Section 6.11, as adopted in the most recent amendment, it had a reference that said we can suspend these rules of procedure beginning with, and then it cited a section, I believe it started at 6.12. I'm seeking to delete that reference to the specific section because the order of business is considered part of our rules of procedure and it's outside of that section. So if we want to suspend our rules, we shouldn't be referring to a specific section. We just want to be able to suspend the rules without being limited to starting at 6.12. So that's it.
Questions? Commissioner Ray.
Thank you. So far it's Angelina. Thank you for lifting up this resolution that we just passed because I was sitting here confused, like we're changing stuff every week and it's starting to get on my nerves. The proclamation communications, is it possible for us to split that? One week, somebody was reading some proclamations and then they started to read the communications and it just got really long. And I don't know, I'm a detailed person, so I'm sitting there like this is a communication and not a proclamation, but nobody stopped the person. So is it a way for us to like split those up so we know the difference between the proclamations and the communications? Because sometimes they come in form of proclamations from other counties. So it's easy to just keep reading.
Chair, Vice Chair, most certainly you could move that the board do that. Or if it's unanimous consent of the body, I can certainly take that direction and fix that before the next meeting.
Okay. And then one other question. Will the resolutions be under item three or will resolutions go under the non-consent agenda as they used to?
Chair, Vice Chair, resolutions will go under non-consent because they do require a vote. Whereas proclamations, being that they're ceremonial in nature, and we actually have a policy on our website about what can be a proclamation. And it prohibits us from making things that are controversial or political or, you know, might garner dissent. Those aren't supposed to be proclamations. So to the extent that we limit them to the things that are on the website, then those, those don't need a vote and they can just be read at the beginning. But resolutions do require an action of the board.
Thank you.
For any questions? Seeing none. Okay, we will vote on this up. Commissioner Strabs.
Just Chair, if we could clarify Vice Chair Ray's recommendation to split the communications and proclamations. I just want to make sure counsel is clear. I would support that recommendation from Vice Chair if we just articulate that for counsel.
I would certainly support that as well because there are some, I guess, communications from counties that I don't necessarily agree with. There are resolutions that they pass that may maybe not pass this board and vice versa, and that we pass that might not pass other boards. So yeah, and even though we're not voting on it, I think separating that lets the public know that we're not approving or condoning a communication from another county. So I certainly have no problem with that. Would that take a bylaws change then, again, to do that? Or can we add it as a part, as an amendment to this?
It would be part of this. So you're talking about it at your informal Committee of the Whole and then you know, you make some adjustments and then you'll have to pass it at your next regular meeting.
Okay. I guess the Chair will, do I need a motion Chair to entertain a motion to amend? I mean, I'm trying to remember that little doll.
Main motion? So you can act as unanimous consent. You can indicate as the Chair, you know, seeing no dissent, it's unanimous that we'll make that correction, or you can entertain a motion in second and move it.
Well, I'm going to look around. Is there any dissent to change communications and proclamations so that they're separate on our thing? I don't see that as a controversial. Okay, seeing as Chair, I'm acting with my ultimate authority to do that. So, all right, now we go into closed session. That's what happens when you don't eat all day. Okay, who's got the motion to go into closed session? Who wants to try to wing it? Do we have a motion Angelina to? Thank you. Oh, you have it. Okay, cool. Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you Clerk Cox. I move to go into closed session as permitted by the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.26818, to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically to review a legal opinion written by Corporation Counsel Barnes on March 6, 2023.
Is there support? Motion with support. Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strabs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Let's, way we go.
All right, Commissioner Wheeler, do you have a motion?
I make a motion to come out of the closed session.
Motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you take your role, please?
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs. Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Oh, there's an objection, Commissioner. Oh, we need to thank you. Commissioner Wheeler, will you make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of our closed session.
Motion moved and supported, and I believe this is a roll call vote as well. Voice vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Without objection, we are adjourned.
All right, I'm going to call the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, March 7, 2023, regular meeting to order. Giving our invocation tonight, Commissioner Strebs, would you like to make an introduction?
Thank you so much, Chair. So I have invited a guest to join us. I hope they have connected via Zoom. So I'd like to welcome Nathan DeBoer. Nathan works as a chaplain resident at Bronson Hospital. And I don't know, Administration, are you able to bring Nathan over to be with us?
Dina, can you hear us?
Yes, he is on. He just needs to unmute himself.
All right, everyone here and see me?
Nathan, just a moment. We can't quite hear you. And I don't, Dina, if you were able to adjust the sound. And welcome to you, Nathan. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Shall I begin? Oh, I can't hear anyone.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. All right, if we'd like to bow our heads just briefly. Almighty and ever-living God, we humbly ask that you should inspire and illuminate the minds and hearts of our Kalamazoo County Commissioners. And that in their efforts to govern for the happiness of the county, they temper justice with wisdom, justice with mercy, knowledge with wisdom, and prudence with charity. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
All right, we're moving into proclamations and communications. Commissioner Wheeler, thank you very much.
So tonight I have the proclamation honoring Heather Bergman. If you want to come stand with me. So whereas Heather Bergman has served the citizens of Kalamazoo County in the Office of Prosecuting Attorney for 25 years, as of February 9, 2023. And whereas Heather Bergman has faithfully faithfully served as a senior assistant prosecuting attorney. And whereas Heather Bergman's service to Kalamazoo County has included assignment to the appellate division where she has served as the prosecutor's lead appellate attorney. And appearing on behalf of the people of the state of Michigan in the Michigan Court of Appeals and in the Michigan Supreme Court successfully arguing hundreds of appeals. And whereas the county of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees who have longevity under the umbrella of county government. Since it is through longevity that expertise and the employee's particular field is achieved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with gratitude. The many years of dedication and service Heather Bergman has imparted to the citizens of the county and offers its best wishes for many more years of mutual association.
Is there a support? I believe we do a roll call vote. Clerk Cox?
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
And thank you for your service.
Chair Taylor, with your permission?
Please, go ahead.
I just want to let you know how fortunate we are to have Heather Bergman working here in Kalamazoo County. Over the course of my career, I've had the opportunity to meet several lawyers, right? Lots of them. Several are pretty good. A few are really good. And there are a handful of lawyers that are extraordinary. And when you meet them, you know that you're working with one of the best. And there are a handful of appellate attorneys in the Attorney General's Office and prosecutors' offices across the state of Michigan that might be as good as heaven, but none that are better. She has done more for the office of the prosecuting attorney than any of you will ever know. That is really unsung, right? There's a lot of trial lawyers whose names appear in the paper. And sometimes it's me, and sometimes it's other people in the office. Not very often is it heaven. But without what she does on behalf of our community, we wouldn't be where we are at. And that's known and acknowledged throughout the entirety of the state of Michigan. So just, I just want you to know how lucky we all are, how lucky I am to have had the opportunity and the privilege to work with you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather's daughter Riley is here.
And my husband Paul.
And her husband Paul. Thank you guys because Heather works like 80 hours a day to hit her shop for me. And so you guys have sacrificed a ton in order for her to be able to do what she does for us. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the proclamations and, and support to note, and communications? So these aren't necessarily things that we as a board approve of. These are, some of these are communications.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have item 2023-5739. It's an email from Sandra Samoska, supporting the takeover of the Road Commission. Item 2023-5747, Lapeer County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary. Item 2023-5748, Lapeer County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. 2023-5749, Tonagan County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties on Its 125th Anniversary. 2023-5750, Marquette County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. 2023-5751, Ingham County Resolution Commending Those Involved in the Response to the Active Shooter Incident at Michigan State University. 2023-5756, Calhoun County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties. 2023-5763, Sheboygan County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. And item 2023-5764, Clinton County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties.
Thank you very much. Clerk Cox, will you take us a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray.
Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Nine present.
That takes us into the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 21, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Regular Minute Meeting of February 28, 2023, Special Meeting Minutes? That motion is made by Commissioner Hepler and supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
And her husband Paul. Thank you guys because Heather works like 80 hours a day to hit her shop for me. And so you guys have sacrificed a ton in order for her to be able to do what she does for us. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the proclamations and, and support to note, and communications? So these aren't necessarily things that we as a board approve of. These are, some of these are communications.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have item 2023-5739. It's an email from Sandra Samoska, supporting the takeover of the Road Commission. Item 2023-5747, Lapeer County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary. Item 2023-5748, Lapeer County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. 2023-5749, Tonagan County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties on Its 125th Anniversary. 2023-5750, Marquette County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. 2023-5751, Ingham County Resolution Commending Those Involved in the Response to the Active Shooter Incident at Michigan State University. 2023-5756, Calhoun County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties. 2023-5763, Sheboygan County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. And item 2023-5764, Clinton County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties.
Thank you very much. Clerk Cox, will you take us a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
And thank you for your service.
Chair Taylor, with your permission?
Please, go ahead.
I just want to let you know how fortunate we are to have Heather Bergman working here in Kalamazoo County. Over the course of my career, I've had the opportunity to meet several lawyers, right? Lots of them. Several are pretty good. A few are really good. And there are a handful of lawyers that are extraordinary. And when you meet them, you know that you're working with one of the best. And there are a handful of appellate attorneys in the Attorney General's Office and prosecutors' offices across the state of Michigan that might be as good as heaven, but none that are better. She has done more for the office of the prosecuting attorney than any of you will ever know. That is really unsung, right? There's a lot of trial lawyers whose names appear in the paper. And sometimes it's me, and sometimes it's other people in the office. Not very often is it heaven. But without, without what she does on behalf of our community, we wouldn't be where we are at. And that's known and acknowledged throughout the entirety of the state of Michigan. So just, I just want you to know how lucky we all are, how lucky I am to have had the opportunity and the privilege to work with you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather's daughter Riley is here.
And my husband Paul.
And her husband Paul. Thank you guys because Heather works like 80 hours a day to hit her shop for me. And so you guys have sacrificed a ton in order for her to be able to do what she does for us. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the proclamations and, and support to note, and communications? So these aren't necessarily things that we as a board approve of. These are, some of these are communications.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have item 2023-5739. It's an email from Sandra Samoska, supporting the takeover of the Road Commission. Item 2023-5747, Lapeer County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary. Item 2023-5748, Lapeer County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. 2023-5749, Tonagan County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties on Its 125th Anniversary. 2023-5750, Marquette County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. 2023-5751, Ingham County Resolution Commending Those Involved in the Response to the Active Shooter Incident at Michigan State University. 2023-5756, Calhoun County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties. 2023-5763, Sheboygan County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. And item 2023-5764, Clinton County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties.
Thank you very much. Clerk Cox, will you take us a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray.
Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
And her husband Paul. Thank you guys because Heather works like 80 hours a day to hit her shop for me. And so you guys have sacrificed a ton in order for her to be able to do what she does for us. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the proclamations and, and support to note, and communications? So these aren't necessarily things that we as a board approve of. These are, some of these are communications.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have item 2023-5739. It's an email from Sandra Samoska, supporting the takeover of the Road Commission. Item 2023-5747, Lapeer County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary. Item 2023-5748, Lapeer County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. 2023-5749, Tonagan County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties on Its 125th Anniversary. 2023-5750, Marquette County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. 2023-5751, Ingham County Resolution Commending Those Involved in the Response to the Active Shooter Incident at Michigan State University. 2023-5756, Calhoun County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties. 2023-5763, Sheboygan County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. And item 2023-5764, Clinton County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties.
Thank you very much. Clerk Cox, will you take us a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Next up, we have public comment. This is a night, time for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address. And keep in mind you have up to three minutes.
Evening. My name is Daniel Hamilton. I use M pronouns. I serve as the Director of Public Policy for YWCA Kalamazoo in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Today I'm submitting a public comment in an effort to bring awareness to the sitting commission and the community around the continued effort for the county to prioritize access to comprehensive reproductive health care for most vulnerable residents. Thank you guys because Heather works like 80 hours a day to hit her shop for me. And so you guys have sacrificed a ton in order for her to be able to do what she does for us. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the proclamations and in support note and communications? So these aren't necessarily things that we as a board approve of. These are, some of these are communications.
Yes, thank you Chair. So we have item 2023-5739. It's an email from Sandra Samoska, supporting the takeover of the Road Commission. Item 2023-5747, Lapeer County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary. Item 2023-5748, Lapeer County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. 2023-5749, Tonagan County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties on its 125th Anniversary. 2023-5750, Marquette County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. 2023-5751, Ingham County Resolution Commending Those Involved in the Response to the Active Shooter Incident at Michigan State University. 2023-5756, Calhoun County Resolution Honoring the Michigan Association of Counties. 2023-5763, Sheboygan County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. And item 2023-5764, Clinton County Resolution Honoring Michigan Association of Counties.
Thank you very much. Clerk Cox, will you take us a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Nine present.
That takes us into the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 21st, 2023 Committee of the Whole and regular minute meeting of February 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes? That motion is made by Commissioner Hepler and supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Next up, we have public comment. This is a night time for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address and keep in mind you have up three minutes.
Evening. My name is Daniel Hamilton. I UCM pronouns. I serve as the Director of Public Policy for YWCA Kalamazoo in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Today I'm submitting a public comment in an effort to bring awareness to the sitting commission in the community around the continued effort for the county to prioritize access to comprehensive reproductive health care for most vulnerable residents. In 2021, YWCA Kalamazoo engaged the county to ask for initial funding to support the only comprehensive reproductive health fund that provides funding for abortion care, doula services, gender farming care and practical support in the country. Since the launch of this amazing community resource, we have been able to do a lot of good and meet a lot of community needs around competence of reproductive health care. Last year, the Reproductive Health Fund serviced over 230 callers, rendering over 240 total services. With access to abortion being our primary use services, along with the increased use of gender farming care due to the addition and expansion of gender farming products. The RHF has been successful in reaching our target demographic. Almost 60% of participants who have used the fund identify as LGBTQIA+. And participants of the fund are almost split evenly between individuals who use Medicaid, uninsured or private insurance holders, indicating that a widespread need for these services are needed regardless of where they land on the insurance spectrum. However, there's more yet to be done. Thus, it should be should be no surprise that the remaining barriers with reproductive health care, including anti-abortion law soon to follow, is the reason I stand before you today. County Commission must choose to be a continued supporter of the protection and access of quality and affordable comprehensive reproductive health care. Enabling access to reproductive, sexual and gender farming health care is critical to Kalamazoo County fulfilling its vision for health equity. We ask that you continue funding, support of the Comprehensive Reproductive Health Fund in removing economic barriers to care and allowing individuals to access the full spectrum of health care they deserve to live their whole healthy and authentic lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the board? Administrator Catlin, do we have anybody pre-recorded messages?
Thank you Chair. No pre-recorded messages this evening. Dina, may you advise on any hands that may be raised on Zoom, please?
Yes, we do have one hand raised and I will bring him over now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, I didn't know if you could see me yet. All I see is the commission. Are we, are we on the air?
We can see you, but we cannot, or we can hear you, but we cannot see you, but.
There we are. Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but my commentary is is more of an inquiry. My name is Dominic Gladstone. I'm a consultant and recovery advocate, addiction recovery advocate in in the greater Kalamazoo area, working on such events as the Recovery Festival, the Coming Together Conference on Addiction and Recovery, and I'm also the community engagement person for our RUSC group, the Recovery Oriented Systems of Care. I also happen to be a person in long-term recovery myself for over 18 years. I'm constantly looking for funding and I understand there is a great deal of opioid settlement money coming into the community. I've heard perhaps over $2 million coming in. I've inquired on the federal and state level actually about where this money is going and how it's going to be spent and so forth, and I'm told that the county government is going to be working on it. So I'm hearing a lot of news and rumors and I thought I'd come to the source. So my inquiry is, how will this spending be decided for this enormous amount of money? Who's involved? Is there a committee involved? And even more importantly, I am a firm believer as a recovery advocate that you can't make decisions about prevention, addiction or treatment without a person in long-term recovery, at least on the committee. So do we have somebody representing the recovery community that can actually add an opinion or two about will it work, won't it work with various programs? There's lots of boots on the ground nonprofits that I work with and we're all anxious to help. We've got a public health crisis with addiction, as we well know. And my inquiry to the commission tonight, and if you could let me know if you're going to address this at tonight's meeting, that how will this money be spent or is there a committee meeting outside of the official commission regular meeting? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Administrator Catlin, is there anybody else in the queue?
I did not believe so.
There is no other hand raised.
Okay, it's traditional that we don't get in back and forth with with speakers, but hopefully administration, if you leave your name and address, administration can get back to you with some of those answers that you requested. Next up, we have a request for, oh, we got to prove the agenda. Commissioner Morales, would you make a motion to approve the agenda? Sorry, Commissioner Strebs, you want to do that?
My apologies, I'll just clarify, Chair. Is this the, I'd like to move an item from the consent agenda. Is this the correct time now to do that?
Yes, this is the correct time to remove. Are there any items that commissioners want to remove?
So you'd remove it at the time you.
A discussion.
Oh, I retract my comment. I'm withdrawing back into my cave.
Okay, yeah, I think this is the time of the approval of the agenda and then we'd approve the agenda as amended if you want to remove something.
Thank you. So Chair, I'd like to request item 2023-5716. Request for approval of the 2023 hourly pay rate for seasonal park attendance. We moved to the non-consent agenda, please.
I almost did that myself. Okay, any other things that want to be removed? Okay, when somebody making motion to approve the agenda with the exception of as amended? Okay, the motion is to approve the agenda with the exception of 2023-5716 to be removed from consent and put on non-consent. All those in favor say aye. Those oppose? Motion care. Okay, now we've got a request for approval of transfers and disbursements. Who would like to make that motion? Dale, you seem to be, I haven't called on you in a while. Keeping everybody on their toes here. Do you want to, do you just have to read the dollar amount and yeah, request for approval?
2023-5786. Request for approval of transfers and dispersments. I move, moved in and was duly seconded to approve the dispersments as defined and set forth in the document entitled Board Agenda Request. Are presented for the February 17th payroll and accounts payable dispersments in the amount of $2,373,356.35. That the county clerk be authorized to certify to the county treasurer that the board has approved on this date, the accounts payable dispersments and the list dated March 3rd, 2023.
There, there is a motion and support. Any discussion? All right, I think roll call vote. Oh, sorry, John, I didn't see you.
Thank you Chair. Administration, can you please clarify the, I had asked the treasurer earlier this evening about electronic funds transfer from the claims that are presented today that were sent prior to our vote today? Can you please clarify that for me?
I, yes. Commissioner Strebs, so we received notice, finance department received notice on February 24th. So Friday, February 24th, the treasurer's office had authorized the electronic funds transfer. There was a batch for that. So as you know, in the claims, some of the claims are dispersed via check. Some are dispersed via ACH. So a portion of the claims list, those that are ACHs were dispersed in a way and approved and released successfully to the bank on February 24th with authorization to have those release on March 8th, which is tomorrow. So effectively, if the Board of Commissioners tonight wanted to pull a claim off of the list, if it was an EFT part of that batch, it would not be able to be, we would not be able to do that because the EFT was already authorized and released to be effective tomorrow. So hopefully that provides some clarity.
So the dispatching of that was not in order, is that correct?
That is correct. Typically, we have the treasurer's office release that once we deliver the message that the Board of Commissioners has approved the claims as part of the regular meeting.
And that gets into one of our budget policies, the ACH budget policy that authorizes the treasurer to make ACH payments. I've been trying to look into state statute to see if there's any way that we can push that maybe into finance to make the payments aspect. In my mind, treasure is receivables, finances, payments. I mean, that's just like the rule of thumb. But you're looking like there's a lot of rules that are keeping us from being able to do that without, or to to assign those responsibilities to somebody other than the treasurer based on state statute. Any other commissioners wishing to comment? Okay, we have a motion on the floor for transfers and dispersments. Clerk Cox, will you please take role, please?
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
All right, that takes us into the consent agenda. Commissioner Strebs, do you want to read the consent agenda so you know which one to remove and we don't accidentally say it?
Sure, Chair, thank you. All right, under Board of Commissioners, I am 2023-5738. Request of approval to appoint Gary Lee Cormick to the Central County Transportation Authority. Item 2023-5753, request for approval to appoint Dusty Farmer to the Central County Transportation Authority. Under Circuit Court, item 2023-5660, request for approval of a contract extension with Ed's Bread's for the juvenile home provider. 2023-5673, request for approval of a position elimination and creation. 2023-5677, request for approval of position elimination and creation. Item 2023-5678, request for approval and position elimination and creation. 2023-5683, request for approval of position elimination and creation. 2023-5697, request for approval of position and elimination and creation. Item 2023-5698, request for approval of a position elimination and creation. And item 2023-5699, request for approval of position elimination and creation. Under Drain Commissioner, item 2023-5702, request for approval of an engineering contract with Spicer Group Incorporated. In the amount of $600,000, not to exceed $600,000. Under Health and Community Services, 2023-5650 Run, request for approval of position eliminations and creations. 2023-5735, request for approval and signature of one amendment number one to the Area Agency on Aging's Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program and two for the health officer to sign on the county's behalf in E grams. Under Parks and Expo Center, item 2023-5726, request for approval and signature of Expo Center Facility Rental Contract with West Michigan Apple Blossom Custer. 2023-5727, request for approval and signature of Expo Center Facility Rental Contract with West Michigan Harvest Cluster. 2023-5728, request for approval and signature of Expo Center 2023 Facility Rental Contract with United Kennel Club. 2023-5729, request for approval and signature of 2024 Expo Center Facility Rental Contract with United Kennel Club. 2023-5730, request for approval and signature of 2025 Expo Center Rental Contract with United Kennel Club. 2023-5731, request for approval and signature of Expo Center Facility 2024 Rental Contract with the Home Builders Association of Western Michigan. And 2023-5732, request for approval and signature of Expo Center Facility 2025 Rental Contract with Home Builders Association of West Michigan. I move that these items be voted on at one time by a roll call vote and be considered as a consent agenda by the board.
There is a motion and supported. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Nine yes.
All right, then Commissioner Gisler, I'm going to put you on your toes here. Do you want to read item 2023-5716? Okay. Telling me I may be out of order and I always listen to her because she's usually right. Consent agenda, consent agenda items. Yeah, it's, this is, we're still operating under the old bylaws. So it's, we are under reports of officers, committees, bodies, administrator and controller. We'll do that. Previous meetings, we'll just jump it right into the non-consent after our consent. But I will, under chairperson's time, I will not say anything until it's members' time, so. Vice Chair Person's report. Vice Chair Person Pro Tem's report. Administrator Controller's report.
Well, well, I cannot do the same because I don't have the same opportunity at the end. I just have three items really quick. Just to touch base and to provide some information I received from our Building and Grounds Department Director McNamara on some sustainability efforts. I know we've been talking about climate change issues and kind of wanted to remind the board and elevate sort of our efforts in that. So as you know, our current administration parking lot, right next to the Justice Center, that has an electric vehicle charger that was installed when that lot was constructed. That can charge two vehicles and there's no fee currently for employees to utilize that. I don't know the current usage of it, but there is one there and so I wanted to let you guys know that. The new Justice Center will have two electric vehicle chargers capable of charging four vehicles. Those will be placed within the judge's secure parking area. So we know that we have judges that are either obtaining or purchasing electric vehicles, already have them. So that should hopefully suit their needs. And then also our Building Grounds Department has two electric vehicle chargers installed at our fleet shop on Lake Lamont for service vehicles. And we also have five electric vehicles on order from our capital improvement plan and ARPA funding. Unfortunately, we've been in line for about over a year on those. And the last time we checked, about two weeks ago, they haven't even started building out our vehicles that we have for, scheduled for our fleet. So just want to bring that up, just to sort of remind the board that we are investing in electric vehicles and we are encouraging employees to utilize that that service that we have in our current admin lot. The second point, I sent an email probably later this afternoon or maybe early afternoon regarding the Bixburg Mill. So the, that developer reached out. I know some of the returning commissioners have already gone on a tour there, but I know. So the, that developer reached out. I know some of the returning commissioners have already gone on a tour there, but I know they've done some more work. That's about a hundred million dollar investment into the Bixburg community and county. They want to schedule additional times. I've already received some responses from commissioners. And then wanted to remind the board that the County Brownfield Authority has had some involvement in that project too, so. It's a good project. I encourage you all to try to schedule some time to go out there, so I, I have received some responses and I'm compiling those. Then I'll shoot out a email with the date when, once that's scheduled. They also have, and I'll send another email, you can also just schedule on your own date with them to go out there to. Tour that project. It's a, it'll be really nice when it's, when it's finally done. And then lastly, I do want to respond. I know that constituent we had just inquired about the opiate settlement. We are still in the process. We're not at. We're still at the beginning stages of figuring all that out, so as you know, we settled. I want to say three settlements so far, and so there are still, I believe, five or six more that the board will have to consider, so. We don't have to move too quickly on this and the board will, once we, actually, there'll be one coming up in April that we have to. Review and the board will have to decide on, that'll be discussed publicly, but once, once we continue gathering all of the settlements and figure out which ones we want to settle on. Then we can start formally plan administration, specifically Deputy Administrator Warner is working on. With an internal group that includes some external stakeholders as well on a plan to present to the board, so we're just still sort of at the beginning stages of that. So nothing has really transpired in terms of. A whole lot of action planning, but some planning has been done and we do intend to bring that forward to the board for review and discussion. But just kind of keeping in mind that we still have, there are still five or six settlements out there that, that are a lot of money, right? And so we need to get those settled first, understand where the dollars are and then bring forward to the board and happy to take any questions.
Just one, the settlement money that we are collecting, since I think county policy, any fund over a million dollars gets invested by the, by the church. So that, those monies are earning interest at least until we make that determination.
Yeah, they should be. So we've only received so far, so the, the most recent one that we settled on with Meyer, we haven't received those proceeds yet. We just recently received the distributor, well, portion of it, right, because they're over a certain amount of years, but we received distributor. I believe that was like the first six or eight years and then I think the first two years of Jansen. And I believe that the distributor settlement, that's well, it's well over a million dollars, so yeah, well. And that was just received, I believe, about two weeks ago, so, yeah.
Do we have any anticipation of what that, those total dollars are? I know that, I mean, it's got to be in the, the gentleman mentioned two million. I, that seemed awful low compared to what we're expecting.
Yes, Chair, that is, yeah, that's very low. I want to say, I mean, we're talking over twenty million easily, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay. Any commission, any questions from commissioners on this report? Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Now, Commissioner Gisler, now it's your turn.
You're sure?
Over fifty percent.
That's, that's a majority. Item twenty twenty-three fifty-seven sixteen, request for approval of twenty twenty-three hourly pay rate for seasonal park attendance. This is under the Parks and Expo Center. That the board approved twenty twenty-three hourly pay rate for the seasonal park attendance as outlined in the packet.
Discussion. Their motion and seconded by Commissioner Hepler, although his main motion doesn't need a second, correct, in the informal rules? I won't get into that, sorry. Any discussion, Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you, Chair. So what's presented to us tonight? An exo wage for our part-time seasonal parks employees. Around just over twelve dollars an hour. I'm trying to, to pull that portion back up in my software here. So the county board is, you know, previous boards. Memorialize the desire to bring all county employees to a fifteen dollar an hour wage. We also endeavored into a difficult wage study with the assertion that we had brought. All employees up to that fifteen dollar an hour wage as well. So it appears that is not the case for part-time seasonal employees. I reached out to administration. And for some reason, the email I received back, and I'm sure administrator can speak to the total cost of this, but the. What's before us is an increase, bringing it from twelve seventy-five an hour, increasing it by two percent. And bringing the new wage to thirteen oh-one for new employees and thirteen fifty-two for returning employees. I would like to see us stay with the spirit of the intention of the board, that the fifteen dollar an hour wage is the expectation. I know communication said, you know, well, these are often college students or they're people working part-time, but some of them are full-time employees that work. On a seasonal basis. Some of them are retirees. Everybody deserves fair compensation. For their efforts, so I would like to endeavor in some discussion about the cost to bring. This to fifteen dollars. I know this affects about fifty employees. They are not all full-time, so it wasn't clear how many FTEs that equated to directly.
Are there any other commissioners? Commissioner Gisler?
Thank you, Chair. I see our Parks Director is in the back of the room. He's not hiding. He's a large man. Could we ask him to come down and talk to us?
I see no problem with that, but I'd like to give commissioners an opportunity first and then I can, I can do that. Commissioner Strebs, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a question for our administrator. Can you remind me if that was the policy that was in place once we bumped people up to fifteen? Were part-timers excluded from that?
Yes, so Commissioner Morales, so I think in, in the spirit of the, the wage or the market study that we implemented. The, the intent of that was to establish base pay for the full-time employees. That, that was the, that was the true intent of it. We weren't focusing on seasonal and part-time employees.
Please, please do.
But was that in writing specifically? Or we just assumed, is this an assumption that we were just focusing on full-time? And if it's not in there. I don't want to go back and forth with policies like we did. We had people coming in saying they felt cheated. Because the policy didn't weigh up to what our new market study had revealed. And I don't want this to be the same type of issue that if they were full-time, it would be a fifteen dollar an hour job. And so I'd like to explore that.
Yeah, absolutely. So when we discuss the wage. That, that fifteen dollar minimum hour, minimum wage, we discussed that in, in terms of when we implemented the market study in terms of full-time employees. That was communication from administration. We have calculated what it would cost to bring these seasonal employees up to, from thirteen oh-one. And thirteen fifty-two an hour to fifteen dollars an hour base pay. It'll increase operating expenses by a certain amount of money, but. I can have Director Rakowitz speak to if his budget could absorb that, but it's to the tune of about thirty-nine thousand dollars. And so he could speak to that if, if you all want more information.
Go ahead.
I'm not sorry. Thank you, Chair. So thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's peanuts. So if he can't absorb it, is it a way, Chair, that we could. Help put that money in place to better support our employees, whether they're part-time, full-time or seasonal?
There was a commercial made a few years back about me with an evil voice saying, if you get five votes, you can do anything you want. Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to hear from Director, but the thirty-nine thousand is for how many employees?
Vice Chair, I need to have Director Rakowitz come up if you want mine. Okay, yeah.
Good evening, commissioners. The, the total number of employees we hire, it's between forty, fifty, sixty employees, so you got to understand these are seasonal employees. So some people may work for us for a month. Some people may work for two months. So we have a capacity that we're trying to achieve across our system throughout the season, but like. Come end of August, kids go back to college, we lose eighty percent of our workforce. We're trying to hire new people on. So the number really fluctuates, the number of people, but typically it's in that fifty, fifty to sixty range of total number of people that we hire in this capacity. Some people stay on for the whole season. We have some really great dedicated retirees that work for us, so they'll stay on for the entire season. We hire usually some Western students when, you know, Western kids come back, so it's really just sort of a mix and it really depends on. The individuals and the people that we hire, so hopeful, hopefully that answers your question. It's not like an FTE position. Some people may work sixteen hours a week, some people work forty hours a week, so when we hire people, we say, hey, when can you work? Hey, I can work weekends. That's great for us. We'll hire you to work Saturday and Sundays and that might be all that you work for us through the summer months.
Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you. And just to follow up, so some make thirteen oh-one, you said return and makes thirteen fifty-two. So if we bump folks up to fifteen dollars an hour, are we still looking at incentivized returning employees? And what would that cost look like?
I, I think the assumption that I used was sort of how we implemented the pay scale in general was if, if we bumped it to fifteen dollars, that big jump. Everyone would go up to that fifteen dollar mark the first year and then the second, the second year, you know, next year, we would look to reinstate that fifty cent premium for returning employees. It's a great tool, especially for college students, to get them to come back, hopefully for, for a couple of seasons. Just to share with you the finance piece, I, I think I can answer some of the questions that were asked. It's about a forty thousand dollar cost, operating cost to us. We, we would not seek any County General Fund money for that. I think we would handle it internally within our own budget. The way we would do that, we currently receive an allocation of accommodation tax money. This year, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand budgeted for expo capital and we have three hundred and seventy-seven thousand budgeted for operations. So we would take that forty thousand dollars. Out of that, the thirty-six thousand out of that, so the expo would come down to a hundred and sixteen thousand in capital. And our operating would be four hundred and sixteen thousand. The, the other thing I can just share with you without getting too much into the weeds, our budget does end the year in the black. Just the way that we operate, we also manage these seasonal hours based on need and cash flow and. You know, so there's, there's a lot of sort of real-time management that we're using to make sure that we're covering these salaries. So that's a tool we use throughout, throughout the, the system and, you know, I would hope by the end of the year that that impact on our capital budget will be much less than, than that projected budget amount. But we got to go into the season saying, hey, this is what we're projecting. We deal with weather and, you know, if we have nice weekends, not nice weekends, there's so many variables that, that we have to deal with. We have had a real struggle hiring people, just like everyone else, so, you know, this definitely would probably help us in that regard as well. And then maybe also the quality of people that we're able to hire on.
Commissioner Strebs. Has anybody who has not spoken yet wished to speak? Commissioner DeLu. So it sounds like you're in favor of this proposal. If it hadn't have been pulled off the agenda, would you have. Addressed it or just let it pass at thirteen dollars an hour?
I submitted the request for the thirteen and the thirteen fifty, so that, that was my request. That was based, and we got, we did a pretty big increase last year. We brought it up. We were in the ten dollar range. We brought, two years ago, I'm sorry, we brought it up and to last year, we brought it up into the thirteens. And so we were just requesting the two percent that was approved in the county budget process. Outside of the Hays system.
Okay, but you do approve of possibly going to fifteen?
I will accept the decision of the County Board of Commissioners.
Well, it is coming out of your budget. I just wanted to make sure you're.
The reason I did the math is we can afford, we definitely can afford to pay, pay for it out of our budget.
Thank you. Commissioner Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. How would this affect other budgets? Because I think we have some clauses in some of the budgets to say me too. So if we're going and jumping a, a single group above the two percent. How might this affect some of our other budgets that would have a much more severe impact on our budget? With this type of, I'm not opposed to what we're talking about, but I'm concerned that this may have a bigger impact, slippery slope. If we're raising one group up, you know, fifteen, twenty percent versus two percent.
May, may I? Do you mind if I jump in on this one? I think.
I mean, go ahead. Well, well, Chair, so and, and Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, Commissioners, what, what I would say is that we were just discussing this. Actually, my team, we're, we're, we're always working here, so. Like Director Rakowitz Department, that's a special revenue fund, so they can, you know, move things around to probably absorb. Other general fund departments, we use the salary pool, so we'll need to perform an analysis on like custodial positions, you know. Raising those up in terms of seasonal and, and bring them back with a premium, things like that, so we, we need to perform an analysis to give you an accurate picture, but I, you know, we, we probably. Could absorb it, but I just can't give you a definitive answer on that, and so we can perform that analysis and bring that back.
I've got the budget policy here, if you guys mind if I just read this here. This is, this, in two thousand eighteen, the County Board of Commissioners entered in discussion on raising the fifteen dollars an hour for all county employees. It was discussed that it would be sort of a phased in, in approach and that was five, five years ago. In two thousand and your last budget process, under your salaries, budget policy, and we'll be going through these budget policies. It states, "The twenty twenty-three budget now recognizes a two percent salary schedule increase and step recognition for eligible non-union employees." "This policy recognized the Board of Commissioners priority of establishing a base starting rate for union and non-union employees of up to. Of up to fifteen dollars per hour due to the costs associated with increasing the base starting rate to this level." "Work has begun to implement increases over the next several budget cycles." So we've been trying to move everything up to fifteen dollars an hour for five or six years and this language of up to. Doesn't, I think, go with the spirit of this commission. That's one of the, the policies that we could change. Me personally, my thought, I, I don't think we as an employer should be paying anybody under fifteen dollars an hour. That's not a livable wage and if we're going to value our employees, we need to look really hard at where we can find the money to do that. That's, that's my, I'm speaking as one commissioner, not as a chair, just as a commissioner, so that's how my vote would, would, would recognize on that front. But we do have in our, in our salary budget that we are committed to fifteen dollars an hour and we'll be working on this over a period of years. But I know it started in two thousand and eighteen, so we're at, we're year number five now, but. Commissioner Strebs.
I'd like to make a motion that the seasonal part-time employees of the Parks and Recreation Department have a beginning wage of fifteen dollars an hour. In this. Let me state that correctly, my apologies. The twenty twenty-three hourly rate for seasonal park attendance, approve an hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour.
We already have a motion on the floor, so we have to take care of the first main motion before we take care of the second one. But we can do, we can do a motion to amend.
Thank you, Chair. My intention is a motion to amend.
I, speaking on that, and that's to Commissioner Hepler's comments, the me too thing, I think we would, should amend that. And then if you could add to also instruct to look at any job that the county is currently providing under fifteen dollars an hour. And to bring those positions to the full Board of County Commissioners. I, I think that would be appropriate as well because just doing for one department, I don't think is. Corporate counsel, do we have to make a whole new?
Well, first, we have a motion to amend the main motion on the floor and so presumably do a second for an amendment, so.
That could be, actually, my, my request could probably be cleaner if it was a second amendment, I would think, correct? That could be, actually, my, my request could probably be cleaner if it was a second amendment, I would think, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So we need a second to her motion to amend.
Okay, what we have here now, so I guess we're getting clarity. We have a motion on the floor, and then we have a motion to amend, we have a motion to amend to increase the the wage salary for seasonal park attendance to fifteen dollars an hour. And we need a second. And we've got a second by Commissioner Morales and a motion and a second. We are now discussing the amendment to the motion. And then if we pass that, we'd have to pass the original motion if we pass the amendment.
Or another amendment. If you want to amend the.
Well, no, I was just thinking for my, what I was talking about earlier, that would be cleaner if it was just a separate motion.
Okay.
So we are just talking about an amendment to the motion to make the seasonal park attendees fifteen dollars an hour. Now, that's going to cost the County Parks Department about thirty-nine thousand dollars that they will absorb. Right now, the County Parks Department, I'll just let you know, is self-sufficient. It is truly amazing that it's self-sufficient. I've always been of the belief that parks are one of those things that shouldn't be self-sufficient. But that's a philosophical question. But we are now discussing that, any other Commissioners want to discuss the amendment? So now we will vote on the amendment. Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs. Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gissler. Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
No.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Now, this takes us into, God, I'm getting lost and lost. So we're now on unfinished business and general orders. Yeah, we're on unfinished business, correct?
You have an amended motion on the floor.
Oh, that's right. We got a vote. Now we got to vote on the original. Thank you very much. So we have an original motion back that has been amended on the floor. Any discussion? Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
We are voting on the motion states, and let me state the motion, is to make seasonal park attendees pay rate fifteen dollars per hour. Because the motion is. No, that's, we're voting on the, now the motion has been amended. So Commissioner Strebs' motion is, or amendment is now part of the original motion. Correct?
I'll start over. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
No.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Okay, now we are still in unfinished business. I think my, my entertaining motion would probably be more appropriate under new business. Any under unfinished business? Moving into new business, item two twenty-three fifty-six fifty-two. Commissioner Mazur, do you want to read two thousand and twenty-three fifty-six fifty-two?
A request for approval of a resolution to post the public notice and set the public hearing for the fifty-two forty-two Gull Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine oh four eight Brownfield Plan, Cal C, Credit Union. Commissioner Mazur moved, and it was duly seconded. We haven't done that yet. Okay, we don't say that yet. I'll move, though.
A motion and support. Any discussion? Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Nine yes.
Now, the chair will entertain a motion, and I'm going to try to articulate this as best I can, Clerk Cox, and I will also get it to you in writing afterwards. But we'll entertain a motion to direct county staff to identify all positions paid under fifteen dollars per hour and give a report of those positions to the Board of Commissioners. It is moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Ray.
I just have a question for administration, because I believe that we have already made this directive going to pass. Do we already have this information? I feel like we were told that the number was extremely low after the wage study.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Ray, may you clarify? I guess, are you asking how many positions that we have that are below fifteen dollars an hour now?
Correct.
So, so Commissioner, Vice Chair Ray, what we determined as far as the market study, we only evaluated full-time positions. So my team right now is working on it as we speak. So we should hopefully have it by the twenty-first for review and approval from the board.
Thank you.
One of those is cooks in the sheriff offices at fourteen seventy-five or something like that. And then there's another one, I believe, the intake, the intake deputy is fourteen, high fourteens an hour. But so there's, there's, there's not a lot. And it's pretty, they're all pretty close to fifteen, but there's a lot in that high fourteen range. Any other Commissioners wishing to discuss this motion? Okay, Clerk Jeff.
Thank you, Chair. I'm good with wanting to get these up to fifteen. I'm just concerned about the procedure we're doing. I think it's taken us down a very slippery slope. And we have a number of issues in payroll. I would really prefer that the administration come back to this board with a full proposal of those that are not there and those that we want to get there. And are we going to impact the negotiations and the other contracts that we currently have? Because I can see there are organizations that will come back to us, and it will come back to haunt you if you don't do it, take the right steps. I'm just sharing with you my concern. I'm good with getting them there, but let's get them there the right way without getting ourselves into a world of trouble on not following the appropriate procedures.
And you're, no, don't be sorry. That, your concerns are very valid. And that's why I worded my motion in a way to allow administration to come back to us. And then we can make that determination instead of us saying that they all need to be fifteen an hour. Right now, we can, the report comes back to us. Administrator Catlin.
Chair, I actually stand corrected. I apologize. So the analysis that we did perform for the market study did include part-time, but there must be some seasonal positions that we still need to evaluate. So we will bring back that list. But I just wanted to stand, have the record stand corrected that the study did include part-time.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other people wishing to discuss the motion? And as the, the motion is to instruct staff to come back to the full Board of Commissioners with a list of all jobs that are paid under fifteen dollars an hour by the county. Okay. Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
There we go, yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay, that moves us into, any other new business? See none, that moves into members' time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the County Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name, address, and please keep in mind you have up to three minutes. All right, Administrator Catlin, do we have any pre-recorded messages?
No pre-recorded messages this evening, Chair. Dina, may you advise on any hands that may be raised in Zoom, please?
Yes, we do have one hand raised, and I'll bring them over.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Berklin Benson. I'm at nine thirty-seventh Street, Plamow, Michigan. This is just another reminder that I'm a county employee that had been placed in the wrong step in my K-band, resulting in coworkers in lower class jobs making more than I currently am. I am not the only Kalamazoo County employee that this has happened to, and I would appreciate a correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people wishing to speak online? See none, we will move into members' time. I will be, go, I think I'll do the chair, vice chair, and vice chair Protem, through my prerogative, I guess. But I'll just be real quick. The Buildings Committee and the Revenue Committee, if you are on either of those committees, I will be contacting you via email shortly. I think the Building Committee needs to meet to explore options about, you know, a parking garage. And the Revenue Committee needs to meet to explore options in that we have a budget policy that each department is supposed to review fees for services every two years. I'm not sure how, some departments have been doing it, maybe not all departments have. But I'd really like, one of the first projects of the Revenue Committee to be is to look at fees for service. And if we're collecting what we should be, you know, constitutionally allocated to collect, to enhance revenue in that, that aspect. There's also different things the Revenue Committee can look at, like the Gull Road Courthouse and such. But I think we start with the easy fruit, which is the fees for service. So if you're on either of those committees, I will be emailing you in the next couple of days for times to meet. That's it. Vice Chair Protem.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank you for all your hard work and the, actually, all of the board members here have been meeting on many committees. I see many of you around, and I want to applaud you all for your hard work in picking up on these, all these committee meetings and being there for our community. I want to reiterate, last time I told everybody I want you all to be safe and take a minute to thank those military, police, fire, ambulance folks, medical staff, all the people that you see. You need to give them a pat on the back and say thank you for your hard work. We had a terrible tragedy just outside our county from the last storm, ice storm we had. We had another one in Portage with one of our other firefighters being struck by a limb that fell while he was out trying to keep the world safe. It happens, it happens. We know that when we go on duty, that sometimes we have to run towards the danger, not towards the other way. And those many men and women that perform these duties, please take a moment to thank them for all their hard work. I want to thank our administrator for his countless hours of keeping us straight and his assistance, that his assistant of folks for their hard work and all of our secretarial staff out there and our maintenance folks that keep our buildings clean and our deputies and our courts and our prosecutors and our, all those folks that are working, that do the day-to-day work. We honored one tonight that our prosecutor was kind enough to point out all of her hard work. But we have nine hundred and some odd employees that are out there every day trying to keep Kalamazoo County a great place to work, live, and play. So take a minute to thank them when you see them and have a great week and a safe week. We've got another snowstorm coming in Friday, I believe.
All right, and I never start with you, Commissioner DeLu. So tonight, you get to, you get to go first.
I can't follow Jeff. I tell you. I don't say, I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Gissler.
Thank you, Chair. I have just one comment, and that is something that I find very interesting. And maybe nobody else does, but the Office of Emergency Management, which I love to sit in on, whether I'm supposed to or not, I'm there as much as I can be, because it's always stuff very foreign to me, very new. I'm not a EMS person or a fireman or anything else. They sent out, I'm sure it came from Mike Kaufman, Korfman. It's a first cut, it's not the final of the coverage, and it's maybe fifteen slides of the first Ohio derailment. And they've obviously done some work, but it's not the, the NTSB hasn't yet, you know, said grace over it and that sort of thing. But it's kind of interesting, and my intention is tonight, when I get back, to copy all the township supervisors. Because last night at the Comstock meeting, one citizen who lives near a railroad track wanted to know what's on the trains that go by her and that sort of thing. And I knew I'd just received this from Mike, so I'm going to send that out to all the supervisors. And if anybody here would like a copy of it, just let me know. I'm in the book, so to speak, and I'll be happy to send it to you. Thank you.
He was very animated when he gave that presentation as well. He was very, yeah, he had a lot of emotion involved. Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give a, give my condolences to the Alvarez family. I don't know if anyone knew ever Alvarez, who passed away last week, we just had a memorial. They just had a memorial service for her. Was that Sunday, Saturday and Sunday? So we lost a, especially for the Hispanic Latino community, we, we lost a true warrior, someone who protected immigrant rights and fought hard for the state of Michigan. So she will be tremendously missed, but I just wanted to acknowledge her and all the hard work she did for not only Kalamazoo County, but for the state of Michigan as well.
Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you. I'm going to add to that, too. I can't help but honor the memory of our friend Eva Alvarez. Eva was an exceptional person, a beautiful person, and really someone who, as it was expressed in her eulogy, was, was a giant and really was destined to go on to become a leader of leaders. She was only thirty years old when we lost her tragically in a, in a car accident. She had already been building state coalitions. She was recognized on the floor of the State House. She was recognized on the floor of the House of Representatives in the US Capitol for her work. And Eva was a friend. Eva joined me here in our lobby the day that I filed to run my first race here as county commissioner. She was on the task force for the County ID Project and served on our advisory board for that. And so I got to work with Eva over six years. And learning she was just thirty when she died, she was just like a twenty-four-year-old, you know, young woman. When I met her, and so incredibly poised, she was the kind of young person that could have been a mentor to any of us. Just an exceptional person. I want to recognize her and thank her. And one, one quote that I took to heart from her eulogy from Susan Reed, who's the directing attorney in Michigan Immigrants Rights Center. She talked about, you know, Eva was the daughter of migrant farm workers. And she grew up in farm housing, on the fields with her parents out working in the sun, you know, to help populate our tables with food. And she never gave up when somebody, you know, didn't hear what she was advocating for her, for her community. She never let it get her down. And when others got. And when others got down, she would just say to them after listening, maybe you should let that go. And maybe we should get back to work. May she rest in power. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wheeler.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, just, there's going to be some, a lot of action in Lansing tomorrow. I think they've got a full docket of stuff. So look for that, but, um, with that, we are adjourned.